I see. Oh, this banner.
Yeah, sure. I mean, if you can. You can switch it, right? The way it should work, what we should be doing is we report to the cloud. Delete any old recordings and then we never. Never fill up space, basically. After something uploaded to YouTube, then just delete.
Let's see.
So how much loot did your wife come back with Friday night?
Just a chair.
Oh, just a chair. She showed her strength.
Crossed her whole summer five hours.
Oh, good brief.
Pretty good little chair too, no? Or woven sheet on it, which solid.
Nice.
Taking her to the show and crossing Friday night.
Oh, that'll be nice.
Sixty-two years.
Oh, congratulations. That's a lifetime.
The loft open up there at the sale process.
They what?
The loft.
Yeah.
No, they don't. Not anymore.
Well, they have an upstairs in the barn. Yeah, I guess you call that the loft.
Yeah, that's.
But that's only when they have either the fireside feast or something like that.
Oh, okay. Last time I was up there, we went up there for a hayride and my mother got off the wagon. Literally, no, not.
This has gone to the website.
Thank you.
Not doing it again next year.
We have some nice horses pulling those wagons over there.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, the last time we were there, they had a pair of Icelanded ponies. Oh, they're pretty. Almost made me want to convert part of my barn.
Hey, burners.
And then they had some. Another time we were there, they had Norwegian fjord. Morses. And I could have put a pair of them in a barn too. They were pretty. Wow.
All right. You open at? Six o'clock. On the dot. All right, so we don't have any previous meeting minutes to look at. And we have no audience. This is fabulous. No department reports. You don't count as audience anymore. All right, so we're gonna go right to appointments. So I'm gonna make a motion for this one, then we can talk about the progress that we made since our last discussion. So motion to appoint Eric Conchup CPA as town accountant for the term July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023. Okay, so discussion. Christopher and I met with Eric. We had a conversation about our concerns and Joanne's concerns. And he, I think he was very receptive to them. He has since gone back and forth with some documents to Joanne and Christopher modeling the the way that they do remote. Remote, what is warrants in another town? So they talked about doing that, which was resolving one of the issues that we had. And I think that Joanne's had more conversations with them. Regarding the other issue, is that right, Joanne? Um, so it sounds like there's, there's a lot of work happening to to solve those problems. I know Barb was up here yesterday, today. Um, I have to say, over the years, working with Eric Conchup, I've been extremely pleased with him and the way that he handles business. I think, you know, it seems to be just a matter of checking with Eric and talking about, you know, if we have issues with his employees that are the ones doing hands-on stuff here, but I've been really happy with him and his opinions and support, you know, in the past three years.
Well. My only concern is if this business where they start passing their work. I thought to her continues.
Yeah, absolutely. So Joanne, if you can keep us posted about, you know, are these things resolved so that you're not ending up with more work on your plate?
Right. They're pretty aware of, you know. Just to stop there. Again, I don't want to be uncooperative when I.
Yeah.
She recognizes that and she. She is back away and anytime we go over her now, she sends you a chart, but she's told me that I can.
Good, okay. And don't feel bad about letting us know because part of it too is what we're paying for, the services that we're paying for, we need to make sure that we're receiving. We don't want to be paying double and paying you to do extra work. Yeah, I know. But please don't feel bad about coming to us. This bugs. Yeah.
I know. I think it's going in a good direction. I appreciate this.
Thank you. Um, is it Rainey that's calling in? He's usually our only caller. Good old Rainey. All right. Um, so all in favor? All in favor?
Yes.
All right, okay. Um, Rainey, we already went through, we didn't have any department reports or anything. Do you have anything that you wanted to touch based on as audience participation?
No, not really. I'm just listening.
You just, it's like your favorite show on TV is Blanford.
Well, when you've been involved with it for so long, it's a little hard just to cut it dry, you know?
We miss you too. I know that's what you were saying.
Yeah, I guess. Thank you.
Mary, if it happens and you're okay, it's too late.
We're getting a thunderstorm here, Rainey.
Oh, he already had it or go by.
It passed you. Yeah, I think it said Granville, though it was more severe that way, so we should be clear. Um, okay, so I'm gonna do the next one separate and then we can do the council on aging ones together and sort of go that way.
Why can't we just do B, C, D? And G, because they're all three-year appointments, just bundle them and do them that way.
Okay.
I can't wait to get out in the storm and get wet.
You're so excited to get. Uh, motion to appoint Nicole Davio to the Arts Council for term July 1, 2022, June 30, 2025. Is her second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to appoint Pat Lombardo and Heidi Taborin to Council on Aging for terms July 1, 2022 to June 30th, 2025. Discussion. Aye.
Aye.
Motion to appoint Jennifer Gerard as Environmental Certifying Officer for the term July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2023. Discussion on favor?
Aye.
I didn't even know that position existed.
Me neither.
Environmental certifying officer?
Yes, there's something that Jennifer does that.
Is fancy. Uh, motion to appoint Colleen Doyle to Conservation Commission for the term July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2025. Discussion on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion to appoint Dave Waldron to Emergency Contact, uh, sorry, Emergency Management for the term July 1, 2022 to June 30, 2023. Second, discussion on favor?
Aye.
Fabulous. All right, and then we've got the signatory for the contract for cultural counseling. Do you want me to put Byam on that?
Yeah.
Byam keeps pushing back to be saying it's not him, it's you. It is the select board that. So I guess here. Do you need all three as authorized signatory or is there only one?
I, I don't think I, I mean, I think usually sometimes I'll just write my own name in there.
Yeah.
If he just wants me to do it.
He wants to collect work to do it.
Okay.
Sure if it's one signature or three needs and then in this one Doris needs to. You sign the next one and Doris needs to do that.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, so Cara, let's under. Chair.
Oh, yeah. He keeps giving it to me saying it's not us.
Who else is on the board, Mary? Do you want me to just make someone on the board a signature?
Signature?
Let's, let's just leave it as me.
He thinks it's the select board that is the ultimate. He's gonna be up, so I'm not gonna reappoint you.
Aye.
Right, we can't, we serve this time. Okay, so we can, he was appointed, right? Does he need to give us a resignation?
No, 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 you just got reappointed.
Yeah, because that's one of those weird ones that only, they can only do one time, two times, yeah.
So you only need a letter if they quit in the middle, right?
Okay, so this part is for you.
There's something you every day.
Thank you. All right, so we did that. Uh, do we have any unfinished business? I love this. All right, uh, town administrator for.
Right, yeah, so in terms of budget items, so next week. Year-end transfers, obviously it's not quite the end of the year. Past papers. Alternative year-end procedure and transfer.
Okay.
However, we want, we have very much in common.
Okay.
That's coming out and then also mini-town meetings, it's on Monday.
Oh, is it next Monday?
Yeah. I have, I have.
What would you like to know? It's the Finance Committee's meeting, time is posted. It is information.
It's the 23rd? And what time is it? Mini-town meeting at seven. So we could do our meeting at six and just plan on being done?
So what? For what you just passed out, that is not a joint meeting. No, it's not a joint meeting.
Yeah.
Select Board and Finance Committee, because I just wanted to be first.
Yep.
To do money transfers and then the mini-town meeting. That's historically what we've called it. It's not the mini-town meeting.
And.
It's an informational meeting where the Finance Committee presents the budget in any warrant expenditures that are above and beyond.
And so it'd be a good place for Christopher's presentation that he did for us.
Or certainly could be.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so. Yeah, yeah, I can do that.
You can ask.
I'll have the presentation.
Okay.
I can have the draft warrant.
Perfect.
Add the bullets for that.
Okay.
Um, and then also, you know, something that we can discuss, the Enterprise Fund budgets.
Okay.
Um, and I know Rod and I are getting close to having something more solid on that.
Okay. Good, okay. Okay.
So, yeah, I can.
Not one of our options. That's later.
That's later.
No, it's strictly Finance Committee that says this is what we've accomplished. We've got a budget, here's the budget and Christopher will.
You should let John Hoppy know that you need the projector set up in the gym.
Okay.
And then you'll be ready to go.
Okay, so that'll be busy in contrast tonight.
Yeah.
She turns the warrant, I submitted a draft to the Town Council.
Okay.
Still waiting on finding boards, zoning by law, and that's, so they had a bunch that ended up on trailers and not pigs.
Okay, thank God.
Yes, yeah, yes. So I am scheduled to speak with Town Council at some point this week.
Okay.
Uh, moving on, Town Common Projects, this was started last year with GZA, we were working with Freedom Design Town Commons. So I got back in touch with Anya Duffy, who's the project manager at GZA. She provided renderings and then this afternoon sat down with Mary and Jan and Linda Barnard about, you know, where we're at the project. Took a look at the renderings, had some suggested tweaks that I needed, so I'm gonna communicate with Anya at GZA about that. And I think next steps are kind of. Talk to Highway Fire about potential, some potential issues that they have.
Okay.
And ultimately, we might want to have a joint meeting of, you know, the Town Common Projects and kind of Highway Fire.
Sure, that makes sense. Yeah.
Make sure those projects are on the same page.
Great.
Commonwealth Places, so this is another grant opportunity that I mentioned last week. I spoke with Nicole in the library about it. So she has some ideas about.
Good, I knew she would.
So, yeah.
Yeah, I love, she's the best.
I wrote for PBPC.
Okay.
And there's a, the firm that's doing the grant administration, Civic Space Collaborative.
Okay.
Someone from there will also be available. Well, plenty of times we've discussed that.
Now, is that separate than the grant we just found out we received?
Yes, it is, but I was talking to Ira and he was saying, there's actually a lot of overlap.
Yeah.
So there might be some opportunities, you know, where they kind of straddle those two grants.
Cool.
Yeah. So on that, so yes, we received funding on the redo grant. I spoke with Jennifer about it on Friday. And so she's got, you know, she's got a whole list of ideas.
Yeah.
And have proceeding. So I'm trying to, I talked to Ira about it a little bit today. We're just trying to figure out what she can pay for now, be reversed for.
Okay.
Um, but of course we do kind of have to set out a process for how those monies will be expended. So I'll come up with a little plan for that, assume something similar to what we did with Art Class, where we have kind of a sheet.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Though I know we also did have already sus out a lot of these projects, so.
So what I was thinking, and a couple of people reached out to me, we had started to have meetings, we had started like a Blanford Business and Civic Association. And we were having meetings and they've reached out and asked, when are we having another meeting? And I just have not had a second to run it, but, um, there had been some offers of, you know, them taking over at this point, but I think we should reconvene a meeting and just let them know we've received the grant. It's gonna be like the Blanford Country Club, the Animal Hospital, all those people were a part of this. This group, so I can find, I'll write myself a note, I'll find my emails that had everyone involved and we'll send the email out, let them know we received the grant and then we can coordinate a time to meet, maybe in the next week or so. Yes.
Um, Christopher, can you tell us, what is PBPC's role in this part of our Blanford?
Uh, so they, well, sorry, the Commonwealth Places grant. That's the, that's the name of the grant. You know, Ira was just the one who forwarded to me. I can, I can dig up the details that, you know, that help us out.
I can, I can look it up. I just wanted to know what their, their particular thought was.
Yeah.
And if it doesn't sound like other than informing.
Yeah, so the Civic Space Collaborative is gonna be the main, it's all on that project.
Thank you.
Okay, um, moving right along, public contract in, Sherman. Finished my TJ's training last week.
Yay, congratulations. Did you get a certificate?
I did, but we were laughing about it because you, you know, in order to get the certificate, you have to pass the test and then you print it out. It doesn't even have your name on it. Fill it in.
You just fill it in yourself. We need to frame that for your law.
So with that, that out of the way, I'm gonna send out the town property, park trust maintenance stuff this week.
Okay.
Tip for each, I need to follow up with vendors because I sent details over and they were supposed to get back to me.
Okay.
I know it's, it's time, so. Follow up on that. Uh, and then real quick, ongoing issues. Litter, the chief can attest, we chatted about Georgia's issues with litter. There's, if your department doesn't currently have a trail cam or anything like that, we can set up, though maybe that's something I want to think about.
Yeah.
But she's been, you've been over in that area a whole lot.
I was running radar last week. It was, yeah, so last week, several days, and I didn't see anything that stood out to me.
Okay.
I wasn't particularly looking for litter in itself, but I didn't take note that there was more than what I normally see.
Okay.
Tammy, you want to remember when you're walking up the road looking for trouble, you can find it.
I was looking for speeders and I found them, so I agree with you.
Now, do you think, um, looking at spending some free cash money or reserve, something on a camera so that we could like move around and sort of, would that be something that would be worth it? Could we? I mean, even if we saw someone littering, would that be something that we can actually?
So for justice, I think it would be great to have one for a whole host of different reasons, not just for this, but for justice case. In order to be able to charge somebody criminally, I'd have to be able to identify them. So I'd have to pick up a license plate, be able to tell is it male or female. If it's a registered owner, male or female, can I?
Yeah.
Identify in the camera, yeah, this is the, you know, so it would have to be a decent enough one that I could make an identification.
Okay.
And know who they are. If they're borrowing a car or if it's registered to a male and it's a female, it would take a little bit of work and if, you know, we might be able to get it.
Okay.
I would say it, it's probably worth. Getting one, my only concern is. I will take note, I will be back out there at the end of this week, is how bad is it?
Okay.
I mean.
Yeah.
Because I did Chester cleanup at the end of April and I had a bag full of nips and cans and bottles and I'm not minimizing litter.
Yeah.
I despise littering.
Yeah.
But is it a new problem or is this just something that's just being noticed now?
Okay.
It would be my, it's just my thought on it.
Okay. If you take note that you think that it is a problem that we should, um, invest in a camera for and you want to come up with some, some that would work for you and get us some prices, then we would have an idea. Of what it is. And I think even though it's a Blanford Chester, I think that would just be a Blanford thing because if we were, unless we wanted to explore, you know, something for Chester too, we could have it be a camera that's just in Blanford and then we don't have to worry about the finances on both ends. It would be just us.
What is the fine for littering now?
I know there's a criminal charge. I will. The last I knew it was a hundred dollars. I would have to look into that. There's a lot of change all the time, so I can try to pull it up real quick and get back to you. Not a hundred percent on that, but they can be criminal.
Yeah.
And I believe it also, do we have a town bylaw that would have a fine on that?
Yeah.
That's what we talked about last week. I haven't, I haven't seen anything yet.
We more or less go under the state's littering law.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what George was saying last time anyways.
Up to fifteen thousand dollars.
You already got it.
Get it.
The beer cans and nips.
I guess that that's gonna be a little water.
Rainey, you got something for us? Did you just forget to mute?
Oh, I'm. I'm sorry, I did.
No worries, Rainey. Yes, Mary, question?
I was just listening and then a storm started up here, so, sorry.
That's okay.
Sorry, Rainey.
We'll let it slide this time.
Like five to fifteen?
Five thousand to fifteen thousand criminal offense.
And really.
Civil offense, it's, what is it, twenty to?
Yeah.
Um, a hundred dollars.
Cool.
Yeah, I don't, I charged several people for littering at my last job and nobody was fined five thousand dollars.
Yeah.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a slap on their, maybe a couple hundred dollars in court.
If we can at least kind of scare people into stopping, I mean, that's the ultimate goal.
But I, I think with the court system, the way it is today. I feel it's a waste of our office's time. To write somebody up and take them in for littering.
Well, it's not, it wouldn't be an arrest, it would be a summons, so it'd just be paperwork on our side and they send it out. So, I mean, it's, it's not a whole lot, it's maybe an hour or two.
And then if word gets out, hey, Blanford is given, you know, then maybe.
Yeah, she's either gonna stop it or it's gonna get worse. Some of these dumbheads we got running around out there, it could get worse.
I haven't, I, I know that's everyone's fear, like people don't want to, they don't want to be witnesses, they don't want to come forward and cry because they're afraid of retribution. And in my experience, that isn't the case. It has happened, I'm not gonna say it's never happened, but in my experience, there's no retribution.
Yeah.
You know, and if we start charging people criminally for littering, if, you know, we're able to do that, I know people saying, okay, catch me now and start dumping and.
Yeah.
I don't think they're gonna take the chance, even if they know they're getting a two hundred dollar fine when you're at court, it's still gonna be a pain in the butt to go there, miss school or work. So, I mean, if I, I'll go down there this week and I'll let you guys know if I think it's.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it. Excuse me. Go ahead.
Okay, a couple other things, broadband, so we got a, we're trying to have a workout there, full year operating budget. Reached out to Maya, you got a quote of how much it costs to add the hut and their, basically the contents of the hut, all their electronics to our insurance, so we're gonna add that into our indirect cost calculation.
Great.
We'll talk about that more next week. See if we can't figure out a way to work that again so that the town basically doesn't pay for broadband to our buildings. Have to make sure the numbers work out.
Okay.
Um, and then lastly, before we talk about ARPA, I'm gonna be sending out my monthly e-newsletter this week, so I just want, I've got a few items that I just wanted to canvas everyone, see if there's anything that's gonna include other than.
Um, if you could include the business, the Blanford Business and Civic Association for anyone that owns a small business in town, whether it's a storefront or not. And, you know, I guess we'll, when we have a meeting, we'll put our meeting in there. It'd be nice to have more people join.
Okay.
I just have one quick question on this store outdoor seating then?
Yeah.
You know, I'm confused. There's not a hell of a lot of parking in front of this.
No, so I actually just got to go over there today and talk to Jennifer, Jessica for a few minutes. So basically, where you can currently see cars parked, that's gonna be the outdoor seating and if you can see on the side there, to the right, you're facing the front of the building.
Yeah.
She's paved that whole area, that's gonna be the parking. So the front, the front will just be seating and then you'll just kind of use that side drive to park.
Okay.
That's your plan.
That's the plan.
Yeah, that's the plan.
Question two?
No, so I had talked with her last week, Friday, and she was telling me about that. I said, you know, I recommended putting up some cement jersey barriers.
Yeah.
And she said she was definitely going to do that.
Okay.
It's a like block. It's a like block twenty-three from the seating, because people are so used to just looking in there.
Yeah, yeah.
So there are gonna be at least, she told me, jersey barriers going along.
Perfect. Okay, that's a good idea. Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, and we were talking about, she, she was like, I can either get them from, you know, my husband's company or.
Okay.
I can buy some nicer ones.
Yeah.
It's just gonna be like your construction concrete.
I know. North Hampton paints me so much.
I, I talked to her about that on Friday, because you know, part of this grant is about placemaking.
Yeah.
So, yeah, there's my ideas.
Well, my daughter is an amazing artist and she would have probably loved to do that, so we can put her in touch.
Okay, great.
For free, I'm sure.
Third thing about it's.
I'm gonna pull up a couple of things on the screen here.
Okay.
I apologize, I don't have printouts, so I'll try to make this nice and large for everyone to see. But we wanted to talk about ARPA funding stuff pretty quick. So let me share this.
This is for you to sign in the order of that. You're there. Do you, you're, are you still the host, right? That's it? Oh wait, I think, hold on, I'm gonna. Yeah.
All right, let's see, she, I missed.
All right.
She gave me some help in that area.
Oh, good.
The bylaw, yeah.
Yeah, it must be something that's gonna go. Now, we already had agreed, the last time we did this, I think we agreed to just go with the state.
Karen just gave that to me a couple of weeks ago, maybe about four weeks ago.
Okay.
And we just, we didn't have an opportunity to present it, so.
So I guess my question to her would be, how is this different than what we already have?
It's got a lot of pages.
Because we currently just, I remember, we just said we'll go with whatever the state has.
Um, can, can you reserve judgment on this phase until after Doris has had a chance to go over?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, um, it probably won't get on the annual town meeting, I think, at this point, right? When do we have to post town meeting?
So I, I mean, I just talked to, to Mark at KP Law.
Okay.
He said, you know, we're waiting on a, a planning board.
Yeah.
Going by law amendments and then, you know, this dog thing.
Oh, you are, okay, perfect. That's fine.
I haven't heard from him in anything about us.
That's fine, yeah. If there's time to get it on there, then absolutely.
Um, all right, so I pulled this up, I don't know if you can see it.
Here, what I'm gonna do is, hold on.
This is a big on screen.
Okay, I'm gonna let you guys, here, let me take my shoes, hold on.
Oh, wow.
I'm gonna let you guys sit together. Here we go.
What are you leaving?
No, you're gonna switch seats with me, so that you guys can look on the computer, because my eyes can see that far. I mean, I don't want to assume anything.
I'm worried now.
Hey.
Hell, I can't even shoot up.
Yeah, I'm checking the radar.
Yeah, it seems like the thunder has passed, but.
That makes it better to see.
So, yeah, this is a, a list of the ARPA funding that we've. Already expended, or I shouldn't say expended, but that we sought, requested. Be, you know, be used for these purposes. So, the old town community ambulance, ambulance got fifteen hundred. The highway department, ten thousand for Colbert, forgetting which road now. Somebody remembers.
It's on my sheet.
I have, yeah, I have, I have the sheet. I'll pull that up. Town website, so we gave Wendy some money to redo the town website. I talked to her about that earlier this month, and she's gonna pull together some, some plans. Country store, seed funding for their kitchen. Blanford Country Club, outdoor seating, a few other items. Gave the, you know, some money for their, what is it called, a geo cluster? Just basically to make sure that if broadband, you know, the fiber, one line goes down, the whole system doesn't go down. You know, similar to how we did with our electrical lines. And then we gave twenty-three thousand to the fairgrounds for some upgrades. And also to the water department. And Gordon has so many different requests.
So many requests.
I don't remember which one this is.
Fifty-eight thousand?
Yes, the fifty-eight thousand one. And then, so down here, I have all the, the requests that we received but haven't acted on.
The tasers we can take off, because that one, we squared away somewhere else, right? We? I thought we did.
I thought we were taking out all of.
We said, we had, I know we had a conversation about that. We said we were gonna use, um.
Stabilization fund or free cash or something. I remember talking about it.
Okay.
Was it on our list for free? I know that we said it, we had had a conversation and that we couldn't use ARPA money for it, but we said it's two thousand five hundred. We can use it out of another, but it might have been before, it might have been like in that window of time, because it was a while ago first.
Okay, yeah.
I think it was before your, your loss.
I can, I can make a note here and say possibly free cash.
I put it in for capital.
Maybe that's what it was, for both Chester and Blanford, so I don't. Okay.
So I won't know that till November.
Okay.
Okay. I've given note about that. Then. Uh, let's see, David Pickard had asked about Colbert on Brookman.
But he didn't give a price.
He didn't give any.
So, we just don't, we're not gonna worry about that.
Is that a guy wants to put a Colbert into his driveway?
Possibly.
Oh.
Yeah, that, well, I think that there is some chalking.
Yeah.
That sounds familiar. That's the thing, we're going back and forth with the attorneys about, see if I can find my copy.
Well, he, he wants to put the Colbert in, but he wants to buy it through the town?
He wants the town to buy it.
No, it was that letter we received, you remember?
Hey, you're talking to me. What's your name?
Do you remember the letter we got? It was from him and he, he was writing to us about how years ago, the highway department just put something in.
Yeah, he wants to.
And they were in, Dave was gonna check with Brad and Brad, and I guess that, there was some basis.
Hold it here on Brookman's car.
Is that the same place?
Yeah, that's, I would think, and that would go back further than Brad.
Okay.
All right, so we, you want me to just look into this a little bit further and then?
That's like, I mean, it's a whole nother case, depending on things we could even like.
I wouldn't even consider it.
No.
All right, drainage on Chester Road, so it's just like, I think one of Dave's. Seventy-five thousand, let me see if I can pull up the, uh, the details on that one, because that's. Substantial. And you might not be able to see this for a second. All right, so the details on that. Yeah, it's on Chester Road. So Dave said, catch basins are destroyed. There are five of them that need to be replaced. Stormwater needs to be redirected. Uh, but ultimately, he says the catch basins will protect our roads, save the town money. And this is in line with our climate resiliency objectives, so, so that's that one. And then backup generators, so this was Chief Modder's suggestion, I believe.
So I know that that's a priority for Tom and TJ, and for me as well, and that was the, is that forty thousand?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, and then we got from the Historical Society, critical maintenance to their building, and bring up the details.
I think they had done this already, so this is a, a reimbursement. Or I think, is this the handicap accessible stuff they did, maybe, and the windows?
The, the windows, but I don't, I don't remember any handicap stuff being done yet.
They haven't done it yet? I know they were talking about the bathrooms, enlarging them.
Yeah.
Okay, but they haven't done it yet.
They haven't done that yet.
Question, Chip was in today. He's asked me to put him on the agenda for the twenty-third.
Okay.
About their progress over there.
Oh, great, okay.
Guess we're going on.
Moving right along, we've got. More water, so the capital improvement plan for the water department. Yeah, twenty-eight thousand dollars. The actual plan, I think, total is forty-four, but Gordon believes they can get some other grants.
Where he?
Yeah, water plumbing upgrades, also another twenty, and then this.
You're looking for a couple hundred thousand dollars.
You could shoot for the moon, I think.
To be fair, I talked to him today, forty-eight thousand for this water turbidity meter replacement. And he says, he doesn't need that at this point.
Well, we gave them, what, fifty-seven thousand for what? Just go back up.
We gave them fifty-eight thousand for GAC filter media replacement.
Okay.
Uh, and then Gordon asked for this one as well, but it's not for the water department, dropping culverts on Sperry Road. Twelve thousand.
I have a, a red line, meaning you already said no to the turbidity meter.
Okay.
And the water inlet. And the Brookman Colbert.
All right. All right, and then we have a handicap vehicle for the council on aging, which I don't know.
We need a lot more information on that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, why haven't you done that? They have some line for it, it's like.
Um, we have a Noah and a pavilion too, because there's no, I mean, it was just, I, it's a dream. I, I love it.
I mean, but.
We're just not, maybe it's actually.
All right, and it looks like Judy did submit a fair amount of detail in her request, but I don't know if it has to pick enough detail here to understand where that seventy-five thousand number came from, so I will.
Is that for a vehicle?
That's what, yeah, that's what's that.
Yeah, is that the one that we lost and then we found it?
Yeah.
But I have a copy of that.
All right.
Okay.
That's right, I forgot to do that.
Yeah.
Doesn't that cover the, the wheelchair access?
I think it's a whole vehicle, I hope for seventy-five thousand, so a vehicle.
Yeah.
Well, that's my question. You get a vehicle like that, just, anybody can operate it.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it has an elevator.
Right.
It's complicated, because then we need to insure it, and then we need to look at, take the gas. Right now, we're working on a volunteer system.
I don't think you can do that.
No, you have to be certified. My friend and mine does that. In fact, my brother-in-law does that. And he had to be certified and all kinds of safety stuff and that. It's not just buying a vehicle.
Hiring, it's starting a whole program.
Absolutely.
That is a little bit more involved than.
Right.
It's a little more involved than just getting a vehicle.
Yeah. And no use buying a vehicle and having it sit while we figure out the rest, you know? We've talked about sharing, because I know they're not happy with the busing system. We've talked about coming up with a sharing system, but it's just. It's never, nothing's ever come of it.
Well.
To talk to you guys more?
She's welcome to, absolutely. I mean, I'm not, it's not a top priority for me, I would say. As much as I would love to help the COA, and I don't mean it in that way, I get that. I just feel like where that. Project is, is still too.
Like Huntington has a minibus, but it's not handicap accessible. You know, because COA had used it a couple of times on excursions, and then, I don't know, there was probably a war somewhere. We didn't have access to it anymore. No.
I mean, it's a, it's a problem that we need to solve.
Well, the thing is.
They have a car with me.
They apparently aren't happy with the vehicle they have. It's got some rust on the underside of it. I would like to see it go to a body shop and get an estimate on what it would be to. Spray it and protect it against more rust to give us some wiggle time to investigate this further.
Is that in our capital improvement plan, do you know? Did we put that, or we haven't started it yet? But we should put that in there.
But, yeah, yeah, that's a good point.
I'm not, I'm not totally against them having something like that.
Yeah.
But I'd like to know, all there is to know about it if we can.
Makes sense. So, all right, we'll, we'll hold up on that one. And you said the Park Pavilion, that's already, uh. And this one, so here's a few that are possibly new. So I, I think I mentioned this before, the accessories office came to us with the idea of purchasing this. Pictometry software, so essentially it allows them to get a more accurate view of. What's going on in the property without actually having to go there and walk the property. I haven't been able to get any details from them beyond that. You know, I, I think, I want to understand if, okay, are we, we're paying for it, but it's only being used for Blanford, or is it?
Yeah.
So I, I just haven't gotten any details from them yet, so.
They can use Google Earth. I use it all the time.
Tree her.
Yes.
Uh, the Chester Elementary Playground, so we, we talked about this before. The total request is sixty-four thousand, but it's shared between three towns, and there's some private funding involved as well. So the share for Blanford would be ten thousand. Russ's Animal Hospital project, so he's looking to have outdoor seating, like kind of outdoor waiting area. Um, and then also put up a hedge essentially. Um, and then he also was looking at just revenue replacement, because he lost a lot of revenue.
I can see the revenue replacement, but I can't see building him a waiting room.
Oh, I was thinking the opposite. I was thinking the opposite. I was thinking that I would, although now with these other. I know that we had talked about the other grant not being great for that, but what the sixty thousand we just got, could that be something that we could?
Well, that's what, that's what Ira was saying, was that the renewed grant would be good for the animal hospital.
Okay, so it looks like we can already fund that three thousand some, from somewhere else.
Yes, potentially.
Okay.
Yeah, I would, yeah. The revenue replacement, I mean, I would say it is that, that's what, you know.
Yeah, that's what it's for, yeah.
We haven't necessarily been doing that, but.
I think that was, I think that's what we did with the, um. Uh, not the store. The store was a little bit, but the country club, I think, was a little bit revenue replacement.
Right, because isn't it the same thing if they didn't have the money to do the upgrades they intended to, because of the last business?
Yeah.
Same thing.
Um, okay, well, I would make a motion to, um.
What's, what's the new figure now that we deleted some of that?
So, yeah, so let me, I can pull it up right here. So if I were to include both of Russ's requests, or just one, pick one of the other?
Uh, well, it would just be the forty, because, um. The three meeting elsewhere. And the other thing we can do is, if we can't give the full amount, we can always just approve, you know, half.
Yeah, something like that.
An option, it's still helping. And about twenty thousand is what we've done for a couple of the other businesses in town.
Backup generator. And where did we end up with the drainage on Chester Road, or? We'll download again, or any of the water requests?
Um, we said no to turbidity.
Yeah.
Got that, and no to the inlet.
Yeah.
Well, the water department would take up all of the money we've got left in ARCA.
How much do we have left in ARCA, one thirty? Around there?
So we actually have, hold on. We've expended one sixty, we've got one seventy-six left.
Okay.
So those, so those requests without water, total fifty thousand, of that remaining, one seventy-six.
How much?
Without water and without, um, highway?
Yes, yeah. Two big ones, so it would be, so the playground, um, the animal hospital, backup generator.
Is, is the, uh, COA plus the one there?
No, we had said we wanted to pull up in the.
Okay.
I think that we should look into some opportunities with Pioneer Valley Planning, about that is a bigger issue. And, and serving our, you know, senior and, and also handicap, um, population.
It sounds like there's a bunch of problems going forward, but yeah.
Oh, that, that's something I can approach Erica, she's my go-to girl at PVC.
Alright, so with the, yeah. Alright, so the backup generator, the playground, animal hospital, and there's one other. I think that's it, so that would be ninety thousand, on that remaining, one seventy-six. So.
Love roughly eighty-six thousand one.
Yeah.
And we still have the Historical Society to look at, which I do think we should allocate something, or it's. I, I mean, what do you guys think about reducing the animal hospital to twenty thousand, I mean, I think that's fair, if you agree with what we've given other businesses in town?
I think that's fair.
Yeah, I.
And then we can disperse it a little bit more.
Yeah, I would, I would go with the twenty, yeah.
Yeah, and I think that, uh, handicap access at historical buildings. I think that's important.
We both may need it sometime.
Yeah, I'm getting that way quick.
So that would add another twenty-six thousand on there. But we can, we can look more into it.
But minus the twenty, so it's actually just minus six, right?
Yeah, so let's see. So one sixteen minus twenty, so that would bring us to like ninety-four, that's ninety-six thousand.
Okay.
And so that would give us still seventy-six thousand, ninety-six thousand.
And Kara, I think if you get any, any static from people on Brookman Drive, remind them that's a private road.
Oh yeah, that's right, I think that's maybe why we said. So, do we want to do these individually, are we ready to make some motions?
If you are.
So I would make a motion to approve ten thousand dollars out of ARCA spending for the Chester Playground.
Sure.
Any discussion?
That is the Chester School you're talking about?
Yeah.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you for clarifying, that's a difference. Um, okay, then I would make a motion, what's the number on the, um, generator, there's, we have an exact number.
Yeah, let me pull that up.
Thirty-nine.
Yeah.
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine thousand nine hundred fifty-seven dollars and six cents.
I would make a motion to spend that.
I second it.
Out of ARCA, um, for the, the backup generator.
Sure.
On favor?
Wait, I'm just, just, just a little discussion, I, I would rather keep it to forty and just in case.
Okay, so we'll, we'll do it even forty, and then.
You know, there may be a hundred dollar here, there, you know.
Installation, whatever, okay. On, uh, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, um, what do we see our next one was? The
Animal Hospital?
Animal Hospital, so a motion to, um, spend twenty thousand, um, out of ARCA for the animal hospital revenue replacement.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let's see, um, Blanford Animal Hospital.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, um.
And do we want to do the Historical Society, or do we still want to?
I think we should wait until we hear from.
I was just gonna say that, yeah, let's wait till next week until he comes in.
Yeah. And what about the assessor's, uh, software?
I want some more information.
Okay, alright, that's good.
Um. Is that, are there any other ones that were? We talked historical, so the, the big ones that we're kind of not talking about right now, I think are the highway and water. But we have already given highway and waterfall money.
Quite a lot.
Yeah. Well, I'm quite over the scraps.
I've got a note here, Christopher, about, uh, reimbursement, bringing the building up to OSHA standards for one thousand five hundred.
For the Historical Society.
For Hilltop Ambulance, we did that one already.
We already did that one before.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um. That just made me think of something else. Oh, do we want to talk about the other, um, money that was requested by, um, the fair?
How much did we give them to start with?
Twenty-three thousand something.
Yeah, we gave.
You know, I, I think we've given them enough, because there's, there's no guaranteeing that there'll even be a fair this year.
So we gave them money to cover lost revenue?
Yeah.
Yeah.
For the twenty-three thousand, and then the other request from them was, um.
Sixteen thousand?
Sixteen thousand seven hundred dollars for emergency repairs.
Yeah. I think, I think we should just hold that, and let's, you know, keep it, you know, they'll be one of the scraps.
Do you think we could use any of that sixty thousand dollars for like the fencing repair at the playgrounds? So that sixty thousand redo grant we just got is like a storefront thing, the fence is a disaster, that's what we talked about, and that's gotta be a ten thousand dollar job.
At least, yeah. So we could give them, yeah.
Yeah, and that's something that Ira mentioned was.
Okay. Because I really, really want to help with some repairs to the fair, so it looks better, and it's more structurally sound, because I do want to see it succeed, I think. Giving them that reimbursement was really helpful, so hopefully they're back on their feet a little bit after a couple of years of that, you know? Um, but I'd like them to even be ahead of the game with, we've got some repairs done.
So, yeah, ten grand for the, uh.
But if that, so if we can get it, so I like that we still have time with ARCA, so we don't have to make that decision now, and if we can, that sixty thousand, some of that can go towards the fair, then that would be great.
Yeah.
And we don't have to spend this money.
Right.
Because if we're able to put money into Chester Culverts, I think that's great, if there's funding left, and we can say, Dave, there's fifty thousand dollars left for Chester Culvert, I mean.
Well, what, that quick repair they did down on the end toward the Chester line, I mean, I mean, it's, it's holding, but.
Yeah.
That, I mean, I, I would be ashamed to have that.
So even if he can do a couple culverts, we can count that.
Well, you know, I took a ride here a little bit ago, because my wife remembers where she used to find Mayflowers, so we went looking for them, not many left. But I noticed a lot of waterways where they'd go out a little bit and stop, and there's a bank like this. So a good hard rain that fills up's gonna run back into the road.
Yeah.
We gotta approach these landowners and get permission to dig these waterways out to nothing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it's a waste of money.
And, and also, like when they did Chester Road, they, they left the drainage stitches the way they were, and there's no riff ramp that in between the road and the drainage ditch.
Yeah.
So it just undermines the road, I mean, just above my house is a construction that's undermined.
Money on that road, I thought drainage was like a huge, here comes raining, or is he gonna yell?
It didn't make it.
Like, I really thought that that was a big part of it, because it was.
Well, I always thought, when I worked on there, and we, we redid a road, after you blacktopped it, you shouldered it, and put the proper drainage in.
Yeah.
Now, they lay blacktop, and there's a hump off the edge of the road.
Yeah.
And they leave it, well, the water in the winter gets back underneath the pavement, picks it up when it freezes, then you've wasted your money.
Yeah. Makes sense. Alright, well, I feel a bit about the, the motions we made for ARCA tonight.
Yeah.
So after that, we got about a hundred six thousand, or a hundred, almost a hundred and seven thousand remaining.
Okay.
We got, we gotta think carefully, because once it's gone, it's gone.
Well, not only that, uh, one of the things that it said it was for was for small businesses.
Yeah.
And I'm honest, see if any other small businesses, like a, a small carpentry contractor.
Yeah.
Who lost revenue because of the pandemic, because he couldn't go to people's houses and work.
Sure, yeah.
Uh, I, I think we gotta start looking for something like that, too, to.
Maybe when we have our Blanford Business, um, Association meeting, we can let people know that we have that little money left in it.
Yeah, because I think if we just keep dumping it into town stuff, it'll make us look too good.
I think we've done a good job, though, spreading it out.
I, I do myself.
Yeah.
But to some little guy that lost a lot of money during the pandemic.
Yeah.
And really didn't know about this, we're not looking too good.
Well, I know, like, I, outside of here, I've been encouraging anyone I talk to that owns businesses in town to.
You can.
To fill it out, you know? Um, so can you talk to anyone that has a small business, or you want to just send them to the website?
Well, I would just think that if we, we kept that, the rest of that money for a while.
Yeah, let's just sit on it for a little while, and now we've got that sixty thousand, too.
Right.
Okay. Um, so what kind of an invoice will we need from Chester for the playground if they don't have it yet?
Should I talk to Donna?
You can talk to, do you want me to give you the, um, the name and contact for the PTO, the Chair of the PTO? They're the ones that are doing. Yeah.
Yeah.
Gina, and I know, she spells it. Um, she spells it different, it took, it took me a while to get used to it.
And Animal Hospital.
Do you have Russ's info?
I'll look in my file. Because I did keep some stuff.
Alright, I just sent you Gina's info. I look, the weather's beautiful now, the sun is back out.
Yeah, bugs are back out.
I know. Are we done? Here we are.
You gotta go over to your expense report.
Alright, hold on, let me do the math. It is May. It's halfway through May, July, August, November, December, January, March, April. Eleven months. Oh, so we should be at like ninety percent-ish? I don't need to do the math after all, um. Did you send it, Joanne, do you know?
Yeah.
Oh, there it is. This can't be the right report I'm looking at, these are all like zero percent.
Look at this. Uncomfortable balance, you're sharing forty-five thousand dollars here.
Of the water fund?
Yeah.
You're way ahead of me. Well, a hundred and nine, oh, that's high, that's what, fire. Hold on, I'm still not there. General Fund, General Fund, Water, okay. So let's see where most of that's coming from, well, there's twenty-five, um, so they're way under on the Water Department Superintendent's salary. Um, I mean, everything that they're under on is just gonna go back into their, is it going back into their free cash?
I'm questioning.
Yes.
I'm questioning all this money they're asking for.
They're, they got it now. Um, so they are fifty thousand under on, um, salary so far. So they're definitely lower on salary. Um, they're gonna have to move some money around in expenditures to cover utilities.
We're all.
But breaks and repairs, they're fifty percent.
We've all gotta do that.
I know, right? Um, yeah, I mean, it looks like it's mostly breaks and repairs, capital expenses. Oh, they have, they got a hundred and fifty thousand in capital expense. They're doing fine. Yeah, alright, let's get to it, what do you got?
Uh, remember I spoke to you last week about, uh, moving cemetery funds from payroll into expenses?
Yes, yeah.
No.
How, how's that gonna happen?
Yes.
Yes, uh, so I've got a list of transfers.
Yeah.
That we'll do on Monday, when the Finance Committee is here as well.
Yeah, okay.
Um, so I will, I think that's on my list, but let me just double check. Um, but essentially, um, you know, you just need to fill out a form, and the forms are actually in the mail copy room. But if you, if you want, I can do it for you.
Yeah, please.
Yeah.
I'm not good at figuring.
Don't worry, it's okay, I'll do it, I'm, I'm gonna, once, once we do all those, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna fill out the papers myself.
Yeah, so, I, I would like to, you know, like I got ten thousand in payroll, and I want to reduce that down to about twenty-five hundred, and then put the rest into expense.
Well, did Dave tell you that State came? What was the money that the, the forty firm that was on?
Oh, good.
Wow.
That's wonderful news, so he's gonna be in the, oh, good. Glad to hear it.
He's moving up to the east side. He's moving up to the east side.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. All right, um, are we looking at the animal, um, by law, or are we waiting?
I think we should read it over and maybe discuss it next week.
Fabulous. Are we going into executive session?
For what?
Uh, twenty Warren Oak Road.
Yes.
We are?
Yes, on the agenda, right?
Okay, so motion to go into executive session, not to reconvene in accordance with GL, um, C thirty A, section twenty-one A six, consider the purchase exchange.
Second.
Aye.
And then the rest of that.
I wanna bring something up.
Is there some discussion?
This is a pet peeve, and I don't understand it. And it's about the bids that we had for.
Okay, so you're not, okay, so we are gonna not go into executive session yet, okay?
Not yet. Okay, now, I have the bids that were given to Cooper Excavation and the bids that were given to Delaney.
The bids that were given to them?
Yeah, or the scope of work, all right?
Mm-hmm.
Now, in the scope of work, this was all given to Cooper. Everything.
Wait, what do you mean by given to him?
Uh, this was what the scope of work that he was given to bid on.
But wait a minute, don't we put that like out online somewhere, or do we don't like send it to businesses? It's like available?
They have to request it.
Have to request it, and this is what he was given, and he, he followed it completely.
Okay.
All right, and now, what, what, what might, what's bugging me, and I spoke with, uh, Christopher about it, is that the discrepancy in the bid, all right? Now, this is not an itemized bid, I have bids here for the cemetery, there are a lot of mine.
Mm-hmm.
So that, I know what I'm gonna expect from these guys that I hired to do the cemetery, what their job is, what they're gonna do.
Mm-hmm.
All right, and the same thing with the tree work that I'm gonna have done, it's, you know, how many trees and what they need to do with them, some of them are just gonna be trimmed, some of them taken down, and that. In Delaney's bid, all it says, remove and replace culverts per scope of work handout sheet.
So he's just referring to this, he's just.
I, I'm, they're just referring to the one that he got.
Which is the same.
Which, which is the discrepancy, is if you read Cooper Excavation's bid, he's got all of this and all of that in his bid.
This is the scope of work.
That is.
This is just an email.
And that is also part of the scope of work. And that's what's on the bid.
But this is just an email that's in response to an inquiry, this is.
That's right.
This is the actual scope of work, so they both.
This is what they got, this is what Cooper got.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
But they both bid on the scope of work.
They both bid on the scope of work, but my question is, did Donovan get, or Delaney get this part of the scope of work? Cause the discrepancy, you're talking almost, what, fifteen thousand dollars difference? I mean, that don't make sense. I, Tommy knows, you see bids come in and they may be four or five thousand dollars in difference in bid, but I've never seen one where it's that. So something's, something's not right, I don't, I just can't, you know, I just can't put my head around it, it's just too much discrepancy. I don't care whether Cooper gets the bid or not, I just wanna know what the.
Well, if you remember, my statement was you gotta, that job is gonna have to, if the, if it's awarded to Delaney, then it's up to us to make sure.
If Delaney didn't get the second part of the, the, the scope of work, then.
Yeah, the only, the only way you're gonna know about that is to either ask David or Delaney.
But this is an email that went from this guy, James from Bay State Health.
That's my officer.
Okay, so this is from our officer to our police chief. And it's, and it's to Dave Waldron.
Right. So that's the safety aspect of doing the work.
So where, where is this saying that it went to?
That's what Cooper got me emailed, cause I went and asked him.
Well, I don't see, this doesn't show me that he got an email, this shows me that our police chief got an email.
They emailed it to Dave, Dave emailed it to Cooper.
But here's, and I understand what you're saying a hundred percent, but Cooper did not bid on that, Cooper.
He did.
Okay, then that's his mistake, he bid on the scope of work.
And that's part of it, you read the bid sheet.
But the scope of work is what we're holding people accountable for, and that price came in at half the price, why would we even?
Well, because he included all the safety.
But we didn't, we asked them to bid on the scope of work.
Yeah, all right, okay. You, but I'll tell you one thing, if I see one Blanford Highway truck bringing and assisting Delaney, we're looking at a lawsuit.
I don't, where does, where is that coming in?
Cooper bid on both those spokes of work. The safety and the scope of work.
So is the safety, if we're not requiring that the safety be done by the.
Then why did he get it to bid on?
That, to me, is not saying you have to bid on that, that's an email that's to the police chief.
That was forwarded to.
But that.
Cooper Excavation.
That, then that might be a mistake on Cooper's fault to put that in a bid, I.
Hey, if you get it and you're supposed to bid on it, you bid on it.
I, listen, I don't claim to be a contractor and understand that process in any way, shape, or form. All I'm saying is when my mind says, you look at the scope of work and you bid on that, and that's what.
Okay, then. I'll, I'll, I'll tell Cooper to submit another bid, because.
Well, it's too late.
You can't now.
No, but I wanna know how much is the difference, I mean, Tommy. This town, this town has a habit of hiring people to, at the bottom number, and we wind up going back and finishing a job with Highway Department funds.
Well.
Well, the same thing.
Well, this isn't itemized to show me what this is costing, like if that was broken down and we could see that like this was the scope.
This is, this is everything that he was told that he was bidding.
I know, but I'm saying like if it was broken down item by item and we had a total of three twenty, we could say, oh, well, this wasn't in the scope and this is, you know, makes up for this much of it, you know, understand what I'm saying?
I have.
All right.
Question, Mary?
What does our newly certified procurement officer have to say?
Procurement officer, do you have your badge? Procurement officer, what are your thoughts on?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I interrupted, I just realized, I never, I never take.
Yeah, yeah, it's up to her.
I have to see what highway posted.
Yeah, it's hard raining, left.
In terms of the procedure, I mean, it's between ten and fifty thousand dollars, they did what you're supposed to do, which is to get, saw three quotes, didn't have to get three quotes just to see them. You got two quotes and you went a little better, which is what you're supposed to do, so.
Yeah.
Um, again, I, I, I don't, I'd have to see what Dave actually posted, cause I haven't seen that stuff.
Yeah, so I guess if we double check that and, um, what, make sure that.
I mean, it's already been accepted, I just, I, I, I was like, when I, when I went out to bid for my projects, I got, you know, exactly what they were doing. So.
Well, one of the things that I kinda was wondering about is before those bids were sent out, we never saw.
That's true.
But I don't think we need to see them, that's.
I think on a job the size of that, we should have been cognizant of what it amounted to.
So I don't think, I think you're going back ten years to select board overseeing everything highway does, I have no.
No, no, that's not, that's not.
That's not true, when you're talking.
When you're talking a million dollar job.
You're not, you're talking a fifty thousand.
No, 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 this is all part of that million dollar job.
Well, this bid is not a million dollar bid.
No, but it's part of the million job.
Oh, I mean, if we wanted to ask Dave, we could have asked Dave, I mean, that would have been a prerogative, we did not. I mean, I.
We should have, I think it should be a, we should have a, a ceiling, and if the job is gonna go over that ceiling, we should be in on the bid process.
I believe that there is a ceiling of thirty, is it thirty thousand that select board, I can't remember, the select board has to look at.
Well, we've got a bid out there now.
Let's see what happens.
And it's up to us to make sure that it comes in as it was bid.
Thank you.
That's our job.
Thank you. And that's not micromanaging.
No.
No, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying to, to, to look at everything before, I don't, I'm not interested in going back.
I, I, I'm, I'm one of those guys that I, I read something and then I have to hash it out, and if I don't understand it, then I ask the questions, you know?
Well, the thing is, uh, we don't, we don't have to micromanage.
No.
We can sit down with Dave and say, okay, where are you at right now? And what is your projected?
I think that it's also important, and it's hard sometimes to do in this position, to separate yourself from any friendships and relationships you have with people, and to really think about, am I raising this concern because it's a, it's a concern in this position, or am I raising this concern as a friend and some, with someone I know?
Oh, cause that, I, 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 I go through that process and I'm trying not to be biased, all right? I, I, the thing, hey, if they were within two thousand or five thousand dollars each other.
Yeah, I'd understand it a lot better, but that was a lot of, that was a lot of money difference there.
Yes, that's.
So it holds us to work with Dave and keep an eye on it.
That's all.
Not micromanaging, but sit down with him and work with him.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay, now we can.
That's what we have, rainy.
Now that I've got my pet peeve done.
David told me he wasn't gonna be part of the Culver project.
Yeah.
Oh, he's not, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm gonna go back, uh, so there's a motion on the floor to, for the executive session, and there was a second, um, all in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Yes. Yes.
Yes, Kara says yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Amen.
Kara says yes.